Hello?
Hey there, I'm just on mute getting ready for the meeting.
Hi Anna, hi Becca.
Hey, can you hear me talking? Hey there, I'm just on mute getting ready for the meeting. Nice to see you Pats though, or talk to you, I guess.
Unless you have telepathic powers, right?
I wish.
Me too. I've needed them for years. I don't know if this weather can get any better.
Fall is just the best, isn't it?
It is.
Love this time of year, yeah.
Have you had a chance to get outside today?
Not much, no, just a little bit of a walk, but that's about it.
Well, maybe tomorrow will be a better day for that.
Here's hoping.
Are you still working?
I'm mostly wrapped up, trying to kind of juggle a little bit of both while I get ready for the meeting, so.
I understand. I do. Hi Jason.
Is that Patty?
Hi Jason.
Is that Patty?
Yep.
Yeah, hear me?
Can barely hear you.
No noise? Really, okay. I don't know what to do about that. It's good to know, though.
You're echoing.
Ah, okay. Thanks for letting me know. I'll do my best to mess with some things and see what I can do about it. Still get my bearings with this.
Hi Jason, it's Anna. As I say, do you have a pair of headphones? That might help, you know, so you have one input, one output type of thing. It's worth trying, at least.
I have to use Jenna's computer because I don't, I don't even have a camera on mine, so. I'm using unfamiliar technology with unfamiliar technology.
Either way, you're here, that's the good part, right?
Well, I'll just mute myself and then that way I don't have to worry about my audio. Unless I have something semi-useful to say.
Hey guys.
Hi Neil.
Hey Neil.
Pandemic and the worst economic recession in decades. NPR's listening to reports from making.
Nancy, what you watching? We can hear it.
Watching, I was listening to NPR. Listening, listening. No, 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 no.
Hey Jason. Did you get your kitchen and stuff all sorted out? At the armadillo?
Sorry, I'm, I was freezing up a little bit. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there's, your bandwidth's a bit, a bit limited, but we can, we can hear you.
Okay, good, I don't know. I was told that I've got some bad audio going on. Is it, am I echoing or?
Yeah, it, it might work to turn your video off. That would give you a bit more bandwidth.
Gotcha, gotcha. So maybe it's a bandwidth issue and is that sounding any better?
It is actually, yeah, well, I think so.
Oh great, well, no one wants to see me anyway. I haven't showered yet today and I was working behind the bar all day, so. No one needs to see me.
So Sarah will probably be 10 minutes late.
I will be right back before hopefully you start.
Okay, thanks Anna. Hey Randy. I filled in all those holes, which I showed you.
Yeah, you figured it out?
Well, nothing's come back yet, but, um, I see, I mean, I, um, I'm, I'm just wondering if that huge family of raccoons had done a bit of digging, you know, thinking there was food in those tunnels?
Could be, could be.
It was weird, really weird.
Because maybe they do take some stuff down in there.
Yeah, I bet they did.
Okay, guy, can you hear me okay?
Yes. Hi Scotty.
Hi.
There you go, you got.
There you go. I've just been over at Bear Creek Park, it was throwing, throwing sticks into the stream, that's Dante's favorite thing to do in the world.
Oh. I thought, I thought you were going in and retrieving them.
No, no. Getting the, getting the water, getting the stick out of the water is great fun.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, Sarah and Michael are here. We don't have Rebecca yet. And she's usually on early, so I'm wondering if she's having an access issue.
I think she must be because she was on when I first joined, so.
Okay, okay. And then Laurie. The other one.
Wood.
Laurie Wood. Did you already call the meeting to order just for the minutes or not yet?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
I'm gonna break my rule and just give it a minute or two extra, just because I do think Becca's having asperius issue. By the way, I do have a dodgy wireless card in my computer. I figured out the issue. So if you see me disappear, I'll be back in a few minutes, okay?
Like magic.
Well, but I, I've ordered a new card and so I should be okay next week, but I might disappear.
I'm calling Becca to see where she is.
Okay. Oh no, there she is, there she is. Nancy. So I think I, I will call the meeting to order as soon as Becca's visible, okay?
Anna. What am I doing?
Audio's working, we can hear you, Becca.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go. Right, so it's 6:02, let's call this meeting to order. Becca, if you could do a roll call, please.
Sure, Neil Minj.
Present.
Anna Andrews Mills, here. Nancy Wilson.
Nancy's here, but she's on, on mute.
Okay. Randy Hodges.
Here.
Shanti Toll, Shanti Toll.
Here.
Michael Howell.
Here.
Pat Sidsman.
Pat, you're on mute.
I'm here.
Sarah Gallagher.
Present.
Jason Wells.
I'm here. Hello?
Okay, that's it.
Laurie Wood.
Oh, Laurie Wood, sorry, I'm discombobulated.
So she doesn't seem to be on, so as this is a regular meeting, we're going to, this is the first time we're going to use our SOP. So it's alphabetical order, so Pat.
Yes sir.
You'll be, um, sitting in for Laurie.
I'm happy to do that.
Yes, yes. And I think that gives us seven voting board members. I'm counting.
Yeah. Jason here. Okay, could you just explain a little bit more of that, so honestly, when I was in the SOP, I wasn't quite following and I figured I would sort of just figure it out once it came up operationally.
Alphabetical orders, so Pat Sidsman is S, which comes before Toll and Wells in the alphabet.
The last names, okay, gotcha. It'll just be a rotating thing.
Exactly, and so as I'm not here on October 8th, it's going to be Shanti who will be on, on base to substitute for me, because T will be the next letter in the alphabet.
Understood, so the October, the second October meeting, I should, I should plan on being present for the second October meeting because, I mean, I assume if I were not available, it would roll to the next person. But do you want us as alternates to try to be available on the days that, to make a pointed effort to, to be available on the days that were, our number is going to be called, so to speak?
Um.
Does that make sense?
I think it's, it's desirable, but I don't think it's mission critical. It, it's nice having a full house as we're going through the organizational stuff here because we're getting everyone's inputs, so it's nice having extra, extra voices. But yeah, I say.
Also. Sorry, in fairness to our other alternates, because then if, if we're a no-show and our number's going to be called and they should, you know, I guess we can communicate amongst ourselves, but I just, we wouldn't ever want to leave you without one of us unnecessarily.
Yeah, usually when someone can't make a meeting, they let either the chair or, or someone know so we can actually reach out to alternates. That's how it, it usually works.
Okay.
And just a little question, is this an excused or an unexcused absence for Laurie and do I need to note that in the minutes?
Uh, you should note that she's absent.
Yep.
Um, and that Pat is replacing her for this meeting.
Okay, and that's all that I need to include?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
I totally expected her to be here. She was gonna help me with the presentation on the rating.
Yeah, so it could be an access issue.
I've been having connectivity problems all day.
Yeah, so, you know, and I haven't. Okay.
Neil, you just got really hard for me to hear.
Sorry. Item three would be approval of September 10th minutes. Were there any edits?
Not for me.
If not, then we can have a motion, I think Nancy Wilson was about to do.
I move to approve the meetings of September 10th.
Thank you.
And Anna, terrific job. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really nice having those sent right afterwards because it, it reminds us what we have to do.
And I've only been sending them to Becca and Neil and that's the correct process, right?
Yeah, I, I think I send them out, don't I? Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those who approves, say, raise your hand or say aye. I think that's, and Pat, you're gonna have to use your voice.
I approve.
Okay, so any nays? So that's seven to zero, Anna. Do you have any members of the public on? I don't see any. No one's in, in the waiting room?
You're muted Becca, but that looked like a no.
No, I, I saw her tap her head, so.
Yeah, no, and we don't have a waiting room because I didn't want to worry about people being stuck, not being able to get in and I'm late.
Good. Second draft of the application and FAQs led by Sarah and Michael, and one of you will probably want to share your desktop.
Okay, Michael, do you want me to do that?
Yeah, could you do that, please?
Absolutely. Do you want to do the FAQs or the recap in the application first?
Let's do the applications first, because I'd like to kind of get that to a point of completion.
Okay, wait just a second here. Can we see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm just gonna walk you through the changes that we made based on the conversation at the last meeting. These items are the same. We did add this field, select discipline category, that we realized that we had wanted to include but forgot to before. So in the beginning of the application for them to tell us like what kind of art or cultural or historical project is this, so we kind of know that at the beginning. We have any feedback about that?
No, that, that looks fine, because people can always add an option.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good.
Good.
Just question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Culinary arts. I know that culinary arts has been a category in the creative district, there was discussion around that. Do you think that could just be included under culture? Or do we, would we include culinary arts?
Well, they could just add it as number 10.
Okay. Other.
Yeah, there is, there is the ability to add your own category. Randy's got his hand up.
Um, yeah, as part of Laurie and, and my work on the, on the rating matrix, you know, I downloaded some sections of the current plan manatee and collaborative effort that some of us here, several of us worked on that. And in the arts and culture section, it calls out as culinary arts be included in the, in the arts and culture section.
Oh, okay, so perhaps we should just add that so we have a consistency then. I think it's, it's nice to maintain consistency with other documents that are used broadly. Okay. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
That, under, under culture, I've been approached a couple of times about environmental things that made people feel very strongly that planting trees and, and pollinator things are part of our culture, are part of, of what we agree, we think we are. So my question is, does any of the environmental things that have to do with how we relate to our environment, will that go under culture or should it be a category?
I would say leave it under culture if we, my recommendation is that we leave it under culture. If we start adding everything that people are interested in in our community, we're gonna have a discipline category that's a couple pages long.
Okay, that's fine with me, but I just want the minutes of today, tonight's meeting to recognize that environmental sensitivity and projects can be part of culture. As long as it's, it's known that that's how we present, then we can present it under culture when, if someone applies for a grant.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm wondering why you wouldn't just call it dance slash theater?
Say that again?
I guess I, I'm looking at one and eight and just as we have lectures, presentations, we just call it dance theater. Yeah, because I don't think, I'd be surprised if there's multiple applications for dance and theater.
Well, I'm talking about environment.
I know, I know, I, I've moved on.
Oh, okay.
Could I make a comment on the Shanti's?
Yeah.
Thing? Yeah, um, just that the environmental group will be coming to the council as one of the boards that come to, or committees that come to council for funding. So I think it's worthy of looking at where there might be redundancies between those two issues. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, you know, if someone's getting a grant from, say, Paribor, would they also get one here? I, I think that's another question. My feeling is not.
Yeah, I think this really bears more discussion. This, this is not an environmental grant. This is art, culture and heritage. So if you, if you want to do, you know, there's some, for, for example, some great dance performances that are done in the woods or whatever that, that may call attention to the environment, but there are certainly other sources for funding environmental projects.
that may call attention to the environment, but there are certainly other sources for funding environmental projects. That's just my opinion, but, but if we're going to start funding environmental projects, I think we need to have more discussion about that because that, I don't think that was the intent.
Nancy on that. Another point of order about that is if they're applying through the match and through city council for their already existing board, that could be construed as double dipping.
No. Well.
Yeah, it could.
It could, but so what? They're two different programs.
Okay, then we should examine this later on, but I, it could be construed as culture, but it would be a stretch. If I was to vote on it, it would be a stretch. They would have, they would have to present us with a proposal that was so crystal clear that it has to do with the culture here in Manitou. And then we could review it like we review all the applications.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree with the review of that. The only thing that comes to my mind is the words like agriculture and permaculture have the word culture in them, so if you were to talk about food growing and the relation to the environment, like that could potentially lead to a culture argument, but that would again depend on the application. It would be something we would have to review and consider, in my opinion.
Perhaps the word culture just needs further definition.
I've spent years on that, Nancy. I haven't come up with a conclusion.
I would agree with that as well.
So I think what I'm hearing is it kind of depends on what the project or activity is, and that's a judgment call that we'll make as a board, I guess, but we would want it categorized under item five in the application process. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so anything else on culture? I mean, I, I think once we get applications, that's gonna help us flush this out because at this point, you know, we could spend hours imagining the range of projects, but I think it's, yeah, it is, it is gonna be important that we think about what culture means in the context of the mountain park in December.
Well, I think it's important as, Neil, that we get as much of this down as possible before we get a first application. Otherwise, the applications will start wagging the committee rather than the committee wagging, you know, controlling the applications. We don't want to set our policy. I mean, I think you're right. It'll come up the minute we start getting applications. All these things that we're questioning now will come up when we start getting applications. But then we're going to find ourselves in the much more of a morass when it comes to deciding who to fund. The less structure we have then, the more difficult it will be. I think the more structure we can add to our process now, the more, the easier it'll be when we start getting applications. Otherwise, we'll be, I mean, that's just my, my thought. So it's worth having meetings to talk about things like culture and how we want that to appear in an application, I think, or what, how we want to define it in the FAQ, whatever we do, before we put this out. Just a thought.
Could I chime in here? Sarah and I have just started the presentation. We will get to that section. Since this, since the entire document that Sarah and I put together has not been sent out, we're gonna go through it. Okay, Sarah, you wanna take off?
Okay. So here I've added the information about having the timeline onto these two points as discussed during the last meeting. And nothing has changed here. And down in this section, we've removed the requirement to have the organization's 990 IRS form included in the application. And that's, those are the changes.
All right, good.
Okay, do we, do we wanna look at the FAQ?
I think so. I think so.
Okay, great.
Then, and then we'll see, we're in a position to formally adopt this application for the competitive.
Fantastic. Okay, Michael, I'm gonna pull this file up. If you would do the narration and just tell me when to scroll, that would be great.
Okay. This is what we sent out to Neil on the 15th, 16th of September. Note that this is technically still a draft at this particular stage because we're dealing with two completely separate tiers on this one. Okay, for the eligibility organization as stated in ordinance 2719, that's the big ones. Okay, basically, this is really, really similar to the actual application. This is basically furnishing information to potential applicants. Okay, down here in blue, if you note Hiawatha Gardens and Carnegie Library are city properties. Eligibility status and application process will different, will be different. Independent applicants will need to be discussed at length as more information is put forth by the city. How we're actually going to award grants and have Hiawatha and Carnegie apply is a little unclear at this point. So moving on down to competitive grants process tier two. This is the one we're going to get a tremendous amount of applicants. Okay, that sounds really optimistic, but I think it's quite possible. Okay, this is open to all citizens and nonprofits within the city of Manitou. That's anybody who wants to complete one of the, develop a project, present to us, request for funding. It's open to anybody. They don't have to have academic credentials. They can apply. It's free to apply. Let them apply. Down here on line two, entities or individuals, not nonprofit entities or nonprofits which exist outside of Manitou. We do get a lot of performers, a lot of artists coming into town. Millable Art Theater is really big here in the community, even though they're just outside Colorado Springs. There are some musical groups that come in here on a regular basis from outside. They will have to go through some sort of fiscal sponsorship here in Manitou. Several of the organizations in Manitou, the Chamber knows about this, the MAC knows about this. They've done frequent pass-throughs. I'm not gonna read, read all of this to you. Just move along with me as you're going down. Organizations are fiscal sponsoring. They need to be in existence for two years. That's pretty much across the board for any nonprofit that applies to us. They need to have been around for about two years.
So is that, is that two calendar years? Or is that two, you know, renewals?
Four years.
Nancy, what is the city on? January 1 or July 1?
You mean for our budget?
To, the fiscal year.
January.
January, okay. I've been to many places where it was July. Okay, so it's January.
And Becca can correct me, but I'm quite confident we're calendar.
Okay.
So do we say calendar here?
Yeah, I would.
Thank you.
Okay, all projects must directly interface with arts, culture, and heritage within the city. All funded projects will be implemented within the city. We're not gonna be funding projects to be performed outside. Okay, and we already started this. We can come back to this later, a discussion of what constitutes arts, culture, and heritage.
Yep.
That's deeply rooted in the philosophies of everybody involved here, so let's set that aside for now. Okay, applications. Sarah, could you, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, applications, tier one falls into two categories, if that. We've got Miramont, Manitou Art Center, the Heritage Center. Again, Hiawatha Gardens and Carnegie processes will need further clarification. Sarah and I don't know how to approach developing applications for something like this. We need more information from the city.
Right.
Okay, next.
So hang on. So on tier one applications, I thought there were gonna be some additional content that we would want from the three nonprofit organizations.
We're going with the Colorado State Standard Grant for the tier ones.
That Colorado coming grant.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna say that I feel we need a budget for the organization, for the upcoming.
Wait, could you hang on? We're still going down.
Okay, I thought this was.
The Colorado Grant application covers all of those questions you're about to raise.
All right.
Okay, what, what we have here, what we've put together here is something that is going to be suitable, hopefully, to be going out to the public so that when they tap into the match website and they're curious about getting funding for their project, they can start with this here. Okay, description of the review process. We're still working on that because we've got so many different criteria. And we're trying to narrow it down so we don't have a thousand checkboxes.
So, so Michael, the, the criterion are actually gonna be coming primarily from what Randy's doing. That is the sort of rating matrix, right? How are we gonna rate these, these projects?
Well, this is if, if, if Randy and, is it Lori Wood? Randy, it's you and Lori working on the matrix?
That's correct. And as you go through this, Michael, yeah, there absolutely is an overlap here. So, so I would suggest Michael does his presentation. I'll do mine, and then we'll see if we, how we need to lend them or separate them, but let, let's see what's going on here. There's definitely an overlap.
Yep.
Okay, this is how we would present it to the public. The core criteria, they have to meet these things. The art, culture, heritage, the budget. You've described one or more compelling feasible public events in Manitou. This, this is the core of how we're going to be looking at these projects. Okay, coming down a little bit, Sarah, to choice criteria. Okay. Now, some of the wording needs to be tweaked on this, so please not, please not go picking on that right now. Okay, project, projects also gives you the opportunity to let the panel know how you'd like to have your project evaluated. Again, this is something that needs to be paired with Randy and Lori Wood. They have to select one of the criteria. They can't just be randomly coming in with things. They have to, have to be following the criteria. Now, the choice criteria, sustained value, community engagement, creative development.
So I've seen this a couple of times where we're using the word, you know, panel.
Yes.
Mac board?
That's a very interesting question. Sarah and I discussed this before, and we could do it as a board. We have enough people on the board with diverse experiences to review a whole range of applications and then make a decision. Another option, which I'm not particularly crazy about, is using match funds to hire somebody to come in and review some of these applications. Again, I think we have a good board. I'm not real worried about that. Randy, I mean, I'm sorry, Neil, comment?
Yeah.
Your thinking. I can see it.
My feeling is it's gonna be Mac board, or we may potentially divide these applications up into categories and have a subset do the more detailed review. But I can't see us going beyond the Mac board, but that's just my, my view. Anyone else have a comment?
I think that's where we're hired. That's why we're getting the big bucks.
Yeah.
To make the difficult decisions, to do the work.
Yeah.
I would say let the board discuss potential funding projects. If we need to bring, bring, bring one or two people in to talk to us about our recommendations. If we're not sure about what a dance thing is going to be or what a history project's going to be, and we need some clarification, well, then we can bring in the applicant and talk to the applicant.
Yes.
But again, that opens up a can of worms because I really don't wanna be talking to all the applicants.
Yes, I think if we can remove the word panel, I've seen it twice, and replace with Mac board.
I'll make a note, Neil, to edit that out.
Okay. Okay, public benefit, why it matters. This is something that people need to know if they're going to do something in Manitou Springs and what it is that we're concerned about here in the community. People who live in Manitou Springs pay sales taxes, blah, blah, blah. In your application, you'll be asked to state specifically how Manitou Springs and its citizens will benefit from the work you do. They need to describe in detail. If they don't know how to describe in detail, then they really don't know the audience and what the audience is going to be looking for. So. Comments?
So there's no, there's no art for art's sake?
No. I'm sorry.
Just asking.
Okay, no, there is, I mean, technically, everything I see here in town is pretty much art for art's sake. The artists are creating these because they're fun. They also, they also learn a lot. They also get to make some money. So no, I don't wanna get into this art for art's sake thing. I went through grad school. There's no answer to that. If some, if somebody wants to create an abstract painting, well, how is it going to affect the community? How is the community going to benefit from an exhibition like this, whether it's, it could be in the band shell, could be any place in town, but how is it going to benefit us? There's also a thing called storefront exhibitions, which we won't get into now, but that is a category that's legitimate if we can find vacant storefronts, which we do have. Okay, Sarah, you wanna scroll down?
Yeah.
Oh. What we require, okay, relevant support materials. These are, these are basically instructions on how to fill out an incredibly complex application. Specific discipline, we've been through that. There may be something here on the panel. This is used for our organizational purposes only. We do not allocate funds based upon discipline. People need to know that we're reviewing many applications from many, many disciplines. And we're not selecting based on discipline. We're not gonna do, well, we could do a year of dance or a year of literature, but that's, that's not in the works right now. Okay, project budget. But that's, that's not in the works right now. Okay, project budget. Okay, again, these are for basically independent people applying for small project grants. We need a simple breakdown of your project. Outlining the specific use for the funds you are requesting, additionally, you may provide details of the items in your budget. Some of them may not be able to do that right off the top, but until, when the project is over, then they'll be able to submit highly detailed receipts and things. Venue, where are you gonna do this? They need to talk to somebody, they can't come to.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think we're gonna be expecting people to show us receipts.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
I'm not expecting people to come to the board with a box of receipts. I mean, we do want to have some kind of summary report out after the event, but.
Okay, delete my word receipt, we need a summary report.
Okay, alright.
That's fine.
Sorry, Michael.
No, 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 please, that's fine, Neil, I appreciate that. Okay, venue, they can't approach us for funding unless they have a commitment from a venue in which to do their work. Okay, any questions about that?
I think we need to add some wording here, do they have permission or authorization to use that venue? So, if it's a city park, have they worked with?
Okay, we get into that, anybody wanting to do anything in a public space is gonna have to go through city procedures.
Yeah, but I guess I'm saying, could we in here say, indicate if you already have approval or the application process for the venue?
Right, I can imagine part of the grant being for renting a space.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, very much so. If they're going to rent this, if they're going to rent a space or do anything in a city-owned property, they're gonna have to go through the city procedures to do that. We will not engage in that, I don't want to get involved in that one.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, work samples. Different disciplines have different types of work samples. And we'll see when those come in. It could be DVDs, it could be a PowerPoint presentation, it could just be a series of images. Okay, now this big part down here, work samples will be reviewed. And this is the information going out to the public. Will be reviewed for no more than five to 10 minutes. I'm not gonna sit there and critique somebody's work for two hours. They're doing a presentation, they're asking for funding, they need to be very, very concise, or else we're gonna sit around for days going through these.
Yeah, I think when we get onto Randy's piece, we're gonna talk about how we actually interact with applicants. I have some strong feelings on that, and I'll try to be quiet.
Okay. Here's basic information on what to do, we recommend prioritizing your work samples. Okay, financial reporting. Again, things in red, not sure about. What is the process for submitting? Are they gonna be submitted to us, or to Becca? Or somebody else in the city? Okay, do we want to go with 14 days? Do we want to go? Whatever. I've always worked within a 30-day timeline on pretty much everything.
Yeah, I mean, some people may want to wait for their monthly finance reporting close to happen, so they have a theme set, but, you know, I think this could be an area where we may want to provide an illustrative sample. And, I mean, I've done a bunch of these. But, you know, I just think giving people an idea of an appropriate level of detail. I mean, I don't want to see every single line item.
I'm sorry, repeat, Neil, repeat that last sentence.
I don't want to see every line item of cost for an event.
No.
But, but, but if we furnish an example of an event, then it gives people an idea of what we're expecting.
And I would agree with 30 days.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to pipe up a little bit as to what is customary in the grant world. Because reporting on a short timeframe like that is not normal. And what usually happens in the grant world is that you will have your report template available to you, and you're able to fill it out at any point, but typically, there's a deadline that would be probably right before the next application is due, when you would submit your report for the year. And I think if we're, and I think that if we're really thinking about what these organizations are expecting from us, that's the normal system.
Can I, Jason here, can I add to that quickly?
Sure.
Please.
Relative to the 30-day notion, just keeping in mind that bank statements, I'm not suggesting that we're asking for bank statements, but they're probably gonna be a useful tool for people in their financial reporting, and they are, you know, obviously, monthly, and accounting works on a monthly basis, so unless someone actually wraps up their project, or whatever it is, on day one of the month, they're not gonna have their accounting completed for that month, if we're on 30-day request cycle. So, that seems a little tight to me, I mean, I don't know, 45 days or six months is reasonable, but 30 days just seems pretty ambitious relative to just how finances work.
Okay.
I want to pick up, okay, Nancy Wilson, I think you were first, and Randy's after you.
Yeah, I agree with what Sarah and Jason are both saying. And this idea of supplying receipts and everything, I've gotten huge grants and never had to supply a receipt for anything. You know, grants of, especially grants like we're talking about here, less than $5,000 or whatever, you know, operate on a pretty good margin of faith, so to speak. Number one, it's not that much money, number two, if they screw up, you're gonna know it in several ways. Number one, the project itself, number two, you are gonna ask how they spent their money, but as far as, I mean, we are gonna have to find somebody if we're gonna actually audit how they spend the money.
So, Nancy, Michael backed off, he didn't mean to use the word receipts, he meant to use the word report. Okay.
Receipt here, okay, I'm gonna delete that one.
Nancy, we're still working on this right now as we're speaking, okay.
I'm just, okay, so I'll, it sounds like I can delete that line then, so I'll do that.
Yeah, I think a report and.
See, I don't see a problem with asking that people hold their receipts, because that's all it said, it was a suggestion applicants make receipts in case they're audited, which seems to be reasonable.
But that isn't our responsibility, I mean, you know, I really think to Nancy Wilson's comment here, the fiscal sponsor is the one who may want that, but Randy Hodges.
Yeah, is this auditing or looking at their receipts and everything, is that the responsibility of this committee? I thought we were set up to make recommendations to council on how to issue grants after we've reviewed all these applications and everything. Are we gonna have time to be reviewing all these completed projects and everything, and still continue to review all these, expect a myriad of projects and make these recommendations to council? I was thinking when we talked to council, maybe we should ask if if they want us to do that, or if they want to assign another group to actually review the outcome of these projects, you know, keep track of how the money is spent.
I want to pick up on Sarah's comment, so. Randy, I mean, the vision I've always had was with next year's application, there would be a report out on this year's project. There should be some form of of report out. I wouldn't call it an audit, but, you know, this is what actually happened versus what the plan was. And it may make sense, rather than to have these coming in willy-nilly throughout the year, to have them all come in at the end of November and December with next year's application.
I just question that we're gonna have the time to review detailed breakdowns and costs of materials and marketing and assistance and equipment rental and all of that stuff. That's a lot of work to analyze a report with that much data in it.
Okay, can I jump in on that one?
Yeah.
Randy, I totally, totally agree with you on that. That's why farther up on this, I was asking the question, where, who are they going to answer to? The board or the city? And that's something that will need to be figured out. Randy, you had suggested possibly asking the city council, do they want us to do it? Of course they're gonna want us to do it. So, don't ask them.
Thank you.
Yes, don't ask them. Wow. Okay, no, the nature of financial reporting for these smaller grants, we're gonna have to tweak, we're gonna have to sit down and tweak this a bit.
Let me give you an example, okay? So, I'm in the middle of ghost tours, okay? Our expenses will be probably two line items. You know, appetizing and brochures. And that's it, you know?
Okay.
So, that's why I think having a couple of illustrative samples of what is, it's not just a financial report, it's kind of a summary of the event, was it a success, did it go as you expected? Because that's how they establish credibility. And incorporating that, I think, next year's application may make the most sense.
Okay.
Nancy Wilson.
The easiest way, I think the easiest way to do financial reporting is based on their budget. So, we're gonna ask them for a budget when they apply. And you just, yeah, you just add a column where they, they report about where, what they actually expended, you know, that they expended it that way, and if you allow for a change in whatever, 10% per line item or not, whatever, but they just report on their own budget. And then you can ask four or five questions about how they felt the project went, and that's the report. I keep coming back to what this group seemed to say originally, which was, we didn't want this to be such an onerous process for the grantees. And so, the simpler we can keep it, the better, for them and us both.
Okay.
Does Sarah, you and Michael could perhaps discuss again about this being a part of next year's application, okay?
I can't hear you.
Neil, I'm having a hard time understanding you, I don't know if it's because you're far away from your mic.
Let me make sure I've got the right microphone on.
I don't, I beg my pardon. How's that?
Much better.
Yeah, I, I'm using my big microphone now, sorry, guys. So, Sarah, you and Michael might just offline, I recorded reporting, and, you know, whether it's a section of next year's application or whatever, but, you know, come back with a second pass, yeah, recommendation on that.
Sounds great.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, down to contracts, I know, Neil, you're kind of opposed to this, you say it's redundant with the application. I've always viewed a contract and an application as completely separate entities. And here I'm talking about after funding recommendations are approved, MATCH will provide a contract that calls out a specific scope of services. The contract defines deliverables, sets a set of timelines, governs project evaluation, things like that. And this is to clarify to the grant recipient that this is what you're, this is really what you're responsible for doing. As opposed to just an application and us going, okay, that sounds great.
Okay, so I'm not going to say anything, I'll let others say something, because you already stated my feeling.
You can count on me to say something.
Nancy Wilson.
Yeah, I don't, number one, who's gonna write these contracts?
I'll write the contracts.
I, I don't think we need contracts, not for this amount of money. Now, maybe when we're giving away much larger amounts of money with tier one, then I can really see the purpose of a contract. But for small projects like this that are finite, you know, if that application doesn't give us a very clear understanding of what they're going to do, then there's a couple of things that can happen after that, but, but it's all there. To have a contract is one step for such a small amount of money, I've never seen it done, quite frankly. That's all.
I've seen what happens, okay, Randy, go ahead, please.
I'm in total agreement with Nancy, you know, or the way I envision it is we, they prove their project is what it's gonna be, we, if we like it, we approve it and say, you're good to go, here's a check, a checkmark, you know.
Okay.
Attorneys write contracts, we can't write contracts.
Randy, I've been writing contracts for 30 years for museums all over the world.
Well.
This is what I do.
Are you gonna write all these contracts?
I'll write the contracts. There's a basic, there's a basic contract template to use on this, and then you go in and you put in specifics. But based on what you and Nancy are saying, I'll drop the whole subject.
Yeah, because I'm in agreement with Nancy and Randy, as you stated, Anna, do you have a view on this?
Oh, my only thought was, I'm fully supportive of Michael writing contracts, I've seen him do it, but what about in years to come? Like, what happens after we're no longer on the council? Would that be a template that would be used just by anyone who sits on the council going forward? It could go either way, to be perfectly honest.
Sarah? I'll come back to you, Jason.
Um, sorry, I got pistachio in my mouth, you caught me off guard. Yeah, I have an agreement with, I think for the smaller projects, for a little amount of money, I mean, if you're going to enforce a breach, it's almost guaranteed to cost you more money to enforce that breach than what was doled out to begin with, so it just, I think it doesn't make a lot of sense. I would suggest maybe for a happy medium, a standard template memorandum of understanding between the city and the awardee.
Shanti? Shanti?
He's on mute.
Pat, you go.
I agree with Jason on this, the contract is more trouble than it's worth. We couldn't sue for breach for a smaller amount of money. I think that we can clarify the deliverables that are expectations and set the timeline, kind of do a pre-positioning of this piece. Once they get the money, a contract's not gonna do us any good. I agree with Nancy.
Okay, drop the contract.
I agree with Nancy also, but I would say that for the tier one, that if, if it's a, a large amount of money, I think we need the flexibility to ask for a little bit more documentation if it's a large amount of money.
Meaning the five entities, right?
Probably.
Yeah, yeah. So I think on the competitive grants, it, it would be the application or the updated application if changes have been made. Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Okay, public benefit working. Compliance with laws. This is, this is where I'm, I'm telling them you have to follow city procedures. Yes, and guidelines. Insurance. This is a tricky thing. I know different 501(c)3s that are, that are going to be used as pass-throughs have different ways of approaching this. Suggestions here, folks. This is actually a city thing, so.
Well, well, these, if it's in a city venue, you have to provide proof of insurance as part of your application anyway.
Yes.
So I don't think we have to get into that now. If it's on someone's private, private property or if it's in the heritage center, that entity is, is responsible for the insurance. But a, a part of, of Meghan's checklist includes insurance for a event in, in or on city property. And that also applies, applies to licenses, you know, a liquor license and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so how do you suggest we tell people this?
I would just lump it in with the city ordinances, guidelines, because that's where it gets captured.
Okay.
You, you, I know that we have to provide proof of insurance. In fact, we have to get, when, when it's held outside of our property, we have to get a, a rider. Because it's in a different venue.
Yeah. Okay.
And it, it may be, be good to just, particularly on the city bit, just to bounce this off, off Meghan. I mean, she has procedures. You know, the, there may be a specific procedure that we can just reference.
That would be extremely helpful. Okay. Description of personal information that will be published on the web, match website.
Yeah.
I'm not particularly crazy, I'm really not crazy about our applications for the match board. Being available to public view. My, my phone number, my address, my email. So I'm hesitant to have match applicants being released to the city, being released to the public.
No, that's fair. We can ask if the city attorney can give us, us guidance on, on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and then an afterthought that popped into my head is general operating, but let's get on with Randy. Well, Jason, it looks like you have a question.
Yeah, in terms of the, the notion of private information being published, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of latitude there, quite honestly. I, I think that we probably will want a city attorney opinion on that. I would just suggest running that through the city clerk's office. The city clerk is the official custodian of the public record and, and contact for open records request. So I just think that needs to be funneled through the city clerk's office and she'll
Okay, okay, Jason.
Jeff for legal.
And we can show her the application and she can guide us on what we don't have to display publicly.
Yeah, I just, I remember going through this with short-term rental applications and we, it was surprising how much information and, and that, those are people who are just renting their second homes, you know? So they might not even have an LLC. They might not even have a, a corporate entity. So all they have is their personal information and it was surprising how much of that personal information had to be public. So just, I just, I would, I would expect that there might not be a whole lot of latitude there. That's all.
Okay, so are we good with the application then that was shown originally? Because I'd, I'd like to, to have a, a motion that we adopt that and it's, and it's now locked. Now, the FAQs are still working in process, but I'd like to get the application to a point of finalization. Or Sarah and Michael, do you want to keep this open for another couple of weeks? It's your call.
I feel pretty comfortable with the point that we've gotten to with it. I think just as long as we have the understanding that if we've made some glaring omission or, you know, really need to modify it, that we can still agree to do that, but otherwise to consider this, this project sealed. I, I feel pretty good about it.
Let's keep it till October 8th, because that's when hopefully we'll get the FAQs pretty much locked down. So we can just do that as one bundle. Because, you know, it, it would be a pain in the ass to have to come back with a word change, you know? So let's just keep it till October 8th. You'll be the chairperson, Sarah. And we can just merge it. So with that, perhaps we could move on to Randy. I'm just going to turn on a light so I'm not sitting in the dark.
Can I, can I pipe up real quick? Also for that October 8th meeting, should we include the Colorado Common Grant Application for Review for the board, for the tier one applicants?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That should be in the October 8th meeting, did you say, Sarah?
Yeah, um, I, I just realizing that we haven't officially circulated that. I know a lot of us have looked at it on our own, but to officially attach it.
Yeah, maybe should. We should.
Okay.
In fact, maybe yeah, we, we definitely want to have that because I think that will answer my questions that I was about to raise earlier.
Yeah, if you could send, just send us a link. Well, before that meeting, everybody would have a chance to look at it. We agree.
And like do a blind CC.
Send it to Becca and she can.
She'll disperse it. Okay, got it.
All right, Mr. Hodges. Item, item two, review and discuss rating matrix.
Okay, um, let's see. How do I put these documents on the screen?
So first thing is, if you move your cursor down to the bottom, you're going to see a green share screen box.
Got it.
And when you, when you click on that, you, you share the specific document. There you go. Look at that.
So let's see. I think I'm, am I showing you the community support evaluation, arts and culture?
Yes.
Okay, good. So after Michael's presentation, Michael and Sarah, it's obvious that the evaluation and the application and the FAQs have to all merge perfectly. So this is going to be real rough. It's this evaluation ranking form, because I think we're going to have to take some time. We're going to have to approve that application and make sure it's concrete. And then we start working on the evaluation. But having said that, I'll go through what Laurie and I kind of came up with. And as I look at this form, you know, the name of the organization, I don't know if we want to have this kind of request in there, amount allocated in the prior year. And, and this is Steamboat Springs form, their evaluation form that we're using as a template. So we just made some changes to that and we didn't really talk about the, the, this amount allocated, amount requested, amount recommended. We got bored down into these.
My instinct, instinct Randy is I'm going to put this into a linked spreadsheet anyway. And having those figures there will probably automatically get pulled into a summary table. So I, I would probably have that on there.
Okay, okay. Now then, then it comes on down to how would you describe the proposed use of the funds, check one, operational fund, seed money program, other, and once again, I think we need to tailor these based on the application and what we come up with with Michael and Sarah's. Now getting into the criteria. The first one, the activity per program aligns with the city vision plan. And I wanted to put this in there because my days on the council, I always liked to have a document to refer to. It's, it's pretty hard to dispute somebody when they're referring to one of the city vision plans, you know, we, we had the Rainbow Vision Plan that was developed in 2000. It was updated. Now Plan Manitou is the, is the most current one. And there's two sections in Plan Manitou that are especially pertinent, in my opinion. One of them being the arts and culture. It has the roles of, of what's going on. They define everything that's considered arts and culture. This collaborative effort by the, by the community. And then we've got, and it's only a four-page document, real quick to review and look for supporting data in there, that we've got the historic and cultural resources. And it's a six-page document, but it talks about the historic preservation, conservation, protection and all of that. So that's why kind of wanted to write that first criteria, kind of centered around that.
Hey Randy, do you mind if I interrupt you? I think actually going back to the earlier conversation on defining what arts, culture, history is, this is probably a good starting point. So thank you for bringing that to our attention because this is a guiding document, isn't it?
It is. It's what the community has written. I, I think there's maybe four of us on this committee that worked on this collaboration, maybe even more, maybe all of us. So yeah, I think this should be, be part of our evaluation and, and our, our mantra as we go ahead.
So Sarah and Michael, this would be a good starting point to add that definition to the document that you just shared with us.
Yeah, Randy, could you send those specific PDFs to Becca so that she can send them to all of us?
I will, I will. I sent those to Neil before the meeting.
I forwarded to use Sarah just now.
Okay.
And I will get these to Becca too, so they can be included in, in future packets. It's good stuff.
Thank you. Amazing.
Okay, I just want to jump in here. So Neil, you're sending these to Sarah.
Yes.
Sarah can send them to me, correct?
Yeah, that's up to you too.
Okay.
I'll send it to you, Michael.
Okay.
Can you send it to all of us?
Well, Becca will do that at a, a later time. Nancy, we, we just got to be careful with the you know, the number of emails we send around.
Yeah, we got to be very careful.
There's, there's this, there is the link to the common grant. There's a couple of other things that you want to get to everyone. So let's get it all i- in one email. Okay, Randy, I'm sorry.
Okay, go to the next criteria. Demonstrates a positive arts and culture impact. Now, we might want to refer to or write that around some section of the application and the FAQs to define that a little bit better. But I think we want to have that, that criteria as part of our ranking.
I think it should be arts, cultural or heritage impact.
Well, it's not the same as Laurie's was, but we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else on, on that one?
No.
Just at the top, also the community support evaluation add heritage as well.
Oh, yeah. Bingo.
Again?
It, it should be arts, culture and heritage. Well, coalition, but just call it, we should just call it MAC, Mountain Arts Cultural History.
Heritage.
And the word coalition can be taken out. Okay, Jason?
I just, I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement that, that these criteria are, are going to be equally weighted because that, that's how this is structured.
Get the, after we've, we defined what the criteria are. But yeah, does that, hold that question?
Sure.
Well, the next one, and we have it highlighted because we wanted some input on this. And once again, like I say, this is, this is just changing up what Steamboat Springs has done. And we felt like there was some specific issues perhaps in Steamboat that they were trying to address with some of these questions. So we should tailor this to us, but there is evidence of meaning collaboration with other service organizations. Now, is that important to us and what we want to see in a, in a project that we're going to fund?
I'm not sure personally that that's that important, given the number that we're going to be dealing with here. Anybody else have an opinion?
I would agree that that's not necessary. And actually, Randy, it does sound like, like an issue that Steamboat has someplace.
So I would suggest we take it out unless anyone has a violent disagreement. Nancy Wilson? You're on mute.
Sorry, I think it begs Jason's question. I can imagine it being worth relatively small number of points, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of credence in the nonprofit world to nonprofits working together to make things happen. And you don't have to look very far to see that requirement, especially if you look at Indie Give. They want nonprofits to collaborate in putting projects and programs together. So I, I, I would just say that maybe it's not our top priority. But, and we can talk about this later, but I think that, that these certainly could have different weights. And that knowing that they have different weights, if we put them instead of all having the same weight, then, then, you know, this could be not vitally important, but it could be something that would put a, a project over the top compared to another one.
So you think we leave it in?
And see what happens.
Give it some, yeah.
I, I mean, we're not done with the criteria yet, so.
Right, right, right.
I would probably take the words service out and just say other organizations.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good idea. Good idea.
Yep. Good with that one for now?
Yep.
So the next one, the organization slash person has a plan that adequately staffs the project as described. And we wanted to, we felt like we needed to make sure if, if a organization or a person says, I'm going to build. A replica Pike's Peak in the park. That's 10 feet high, you know, is he going to do it by himself and it's going to take 10 years? Or is, does he have staff to complete this in some kind of a timely manner? And.
I guess, I guess I would maybe alter that to, does this organization person have credibility? That they can deliver and execute the project? Take it beyond staffing, just, just take it to, do, do we think they can do it?
So, so how? How do you think is a better way to say that?
Well, first of all. Did anyone have a comment on what I just said about raising this up to just be, do they have credibility?
I would say verified administrative capacity.
Are you such a lawyer?
I, I hate that man, I hate that. Does, sorry Jason, I, I think I said that out loud. Does, does the organization person?
Have the ability to carry, carry out the project as described?
The ability and the resources is what you're talking about.
I'd say ability and credibility. Credibility kind of captures, I think, the breadth of, of what's involved in delivering a project. Whether it's resources, whether it's budget, whether it's getting the other sponsors on board, you know, it's. It's beyond just manpower.
I think capacity is a really good word. Hmm.
Okay, no, that's good, that's good, I like that. So you're thinking.
And that encompasses all the things you're talking about, Neil.
And that's great, Nancy, I like that a lot.
So have the, have the capacity to execute the project?
As described.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
Execute. Project as described. Yeah, that's good. All right, are we good with that?
Yeah.
So the next one. This grant is no more than 30% of the organization's total budget. Do we need to analyze the organization's budget and require this?
I think, I think of, you know, maybe like a situation where perhaps there's. A group of schoolchildren at the elementary school that have a cool project that they decide to partner with someone on. And this is going to be the only thing they do. Maybe, you know, it's a club and they don't really have a budget and this is all of the money they're going to use in the whole year to do this one thing. Are we going to penalize them because of that?
Right, Laurie and I talked about that exact thing, Sarah, we talked about that. And once again, this coming from Steamboats. So we left it in because we can't just strike it, we have to fill something back into the, to the matrix here. We can't just have a blank line. So what do we think better fits our, our application? Or do we need to go through? Kind of do a, a comparison with the application to complete this line?
I think there's a lot of, I think you guys have done a great job, but I think there's a lot of things that you could add to this criteria that might help. Separate this process and one is just, and it kind of feeds into this one and your next couple there. And that is, is the application complete, number one? So have they filled out a budget, et cetera, that's understandable to the group? And have they filled in all the blanks on the application? Since that a lot of these questions in the criteria are answered for you. Because if they haven't submitted a complete application. It's difficult. So often a certain number of points are avoid, are awarded for a complete application. And then on down the line. So we're going to see their budget. And I think the question that you and, and. That you, that you just brought up, like what if they don't have a budget? What if it's a single individual that is going through, you know, the community foundation? Do you mean 30% of the community foundations budget, whatever? I'm not sure it's really, I'm not sure it's pertinent with these small grants.
I think we strike that altogether, we just need to figure out what, what we want to put in there. And, you know, is the application complete? That's. That, that might be very.
Why does something have to be put in there?
Yeah.
Well, we, don't we need to have, you know, we need to have a certain number of. Criteria so we can develop the score, don't we?
Yeah, the more the better.
Okay, is this all the criteria, Randy?
This is it so far, unless we add more as we go along, as we go along.
I'm back, guys.
You say my name, Neil? Sorry. I like the idea, yeah, I like the idea of, of ranking how it's completeness. I would just expand that a little bit, is it complete and did they follow instructions? Because you could say it's complete if they filled in every blank, but maybe they didn't do so very well. I like, I like, I like the notion of asking whether it's complete and did the applicant follow, adequately follow instructions? I, I think another good question that maybe might be asked, that's not asked here or in Steamboat is. Whether the concept fulfills, fulfills a unique need that isn't otherwise filled in the community. Something to that effect.
Was that, you said Jason, is the application complete and?
Complete and did the, did the applicant follow thoroughly follow instructions? I mean, applications that were complete technically, but that were terrible, right? So I, I like sort of just as a generalized question of, did they do it well? They, they do what they were asked. And then again, just an idea for if we, if we need other criteria is whether, whether the concept itself. Fulfills a, a community need that's not otherwise filled through some other means.
And, you know, we could put that in this next, this next cell too, because I'm not really real keen on, on. Questioning their strength and diversity, you know, and other funding sources, so.
If someone wants to do science experiments in the park and there's someone already doing that, shouldn't that be weighted somehow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, um. I think that, that one of the things we've talked about is that an organizational and. A nonprofit anyway, that has a variety of sources of funding. And you're, this kind of goes back to your two year thing. You, you want an organization, or you're hoping the organization is sustainable. And so if, if they have some strength or diversity of funding, it kind of. Helps to tell you that. Once again, this may be something that you don't rate highly, or you don't give a lot of points to, but. It tells you, it really tells you something about an organization. Like it doesn't tell you much about an individual, but. And it depends on if it's standalone nonprofit or they're going through another nonprofit here, whether that is really a meaningful question.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm back, I, I called in, I dropped, you know, twice. My feeling on this is for the competitive mini grants, we don't need this. But I do think for Miramont Heritage and MAC. The 30% does make sense.
Right, but Laurie and I thought this was more targeted towards the, the smaller grants. This evaluation form, we felt like there's going to have to be a totally different evaluation form for, for the tier one, for the big five.
Yeah. And Randy, I think. Randy, I think on those tier one organizations, you could look directly at the questions that the CGA is asking. And translate those items into a matrix pretty quickly.
So do we have a, do we have a question or a criteria we want to insert in? In this cell?
I think Sarah has a really good point. I think this, this is worth looking at the, at, at the application that we just approved.
Agreed.
To come up with some more criteria.
Okay.
Right now, because of just five, five points and whatever we have, five or six criteria. I can see, I can see multiple organizations or applications having very close to the same score. And the more you can spread out that criteria a little bit more and weight the criteria in different ways. The more you're going to get a variety of opinions or, you know. That.
Yep.
The. Sorry, Randy.
So you think we should come up with more criteria based on the application? Yeah, and I, I, I agree, especially after Sarah and Michael's presentation and, and seeing that application and the FAQs and everything. Yeah, we need to, we need to look at both of these side by side and. And develop.
The. The experience I've had with ratings is if you, if you go to too many criterion. You end up with everything being, being the same, because everything's on a bell curve. But one idea I had was we encourage. The use of one, three and five as the primary digits we use in our rating. With zero, two and four as kind of like if we're really stuck in between to kind of force separation. So is it a zero to five score here? But if, if we say really try and use one, three and five only. And use the zero, two and four when you're stuck in between. But I, I definitely would be cautious about having too many criterion.
I think you need more than this. I definitely think you need more than this, but.
So there's six here, right?
Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven there, we can fill something back here.
Are we leaving the 990 in there?
Are we? You guys said we didn't need it and Laurie, this was Laurie felt that we needed to ask if they had submitted a 990.
I don't think, not for these small organizations.
No.
Not for the small grants.
Yeah, we've, we've dropped that as a, a requirement for the competitive grants.
So that comes out.
Randy?
Yes.
Did you guys talk about? I mean, one of the things that's, that's often done is, is I'm assuming that, that this criteria will be shared with the applicant. Or if it's not shared directly, often what happens is. Because the grant is broken down into sections. The applicant knows that having a, you know, a completed application is worth 10 points. And answering question three. Well, is worth 20 points or whatever, that, that the applicant actually knows what we're putting an emphasis on. So say we decide to put an emphasis on the program or activity aligning with the city's vision and plan. I mean, we haven't really talked about weighting these things. And I, I don't want to complicate it too much, but as it sits right now. I think that we could look at this as individuals, each one of us, it's fairly subjective, other than is the application complete? And, and we could argue about it all day. Whereas if you have a little more criteria and they're weighted and we, and they're given a point value. We are likely to come up with a score, each person is likely to come up with a score that, that puts it along a. What do I want to say, puts it in a, a matrix or whatever, that gives you a clearer answer. As to where this particular project is rated. And I just, I mean, we could, we could try it this simplistically, obviously it's worked for, for. Steamboat to some extent, but they've also had the same folks, it looks like year after year applying. But I can just. I can imagine that we come consistently come up with, let's say the, the, the top score is 25 points. And we consistently come up with grants that are awarded whatever between 22 and 25 points. And we don't have enough money for all of them, so we need more of a point spread. And this doesn't give us much of a point spread, I guess that's my only point.
Do you have some? Suggestions for, for questions or criteria that are more objective? Than some of these are?
I need to sit down with the application.
Me too, now that I'm seeing the application, my, my mind is changed on kind of how it all works.
So I think I'm, I'm going to. Ask that we pause now. I think that there's a opportunity to harmonize this with some of the ideas Michael and Sarah had. There may have been some additional. Question areas in that, I, I don't actually, actually recall, but. You know, the, the ten here were the first, a first pass. And I fully agree, we need a means of separating the different applications out. But I don't think we're going to accomplish much more now. So I think Randy. We can, Sarah can send you the document she reviewed earlier. Which had some additional ideas on criterion. And perhaps you guys just try and harmonize that to make a version two of this. Take into account, do we weight them all equally? Do we have enough of a point spread, you know, those kinds of things? Because I'm sensitive to time, it's 7:30 now. And we do have a couple of other things to talk about. Is that okay, guys?
So yeah, I'll, I'll give you a call, Sarah, and it's an email or something. We'll. Work on this some more.
Okay, sounds good.
This is going to be something that we have to have city council approve of how we're going to rate these. So they have confidence that, that we have a, a method, methodology. Okay. I'd like to move to item. Three, which is. A timeline. You know, in our first, our first meeting, I had, had thrown up a timeline. I'm going to try sharing this, but if, if I get kicked out again. I'll just have to talk. Through it, okay? But you should be seeing a spreadsheet, let me. But you should be seeing a spreadsheet, let me increase it a bit. Okay. So I'm still using March third as our our deliverable date, which is issuing checks. But we're going to communicate April. Okay? But for our, our timeline, we're driving to the third of March. And the reason it's the third is that's after a city council meeting on the second. Because that's where the final approval will need to be obtained. Assuming it's a, a regular meeting. But I'm going to kind of, I feel we need to get a communication out to the community. Where we are and some high level milestones. We don't have to tell them what the application is, we don't have to tell them how we're going to rate them, but, but I think several of us are beginning to get questions coming from various nonprofits. So I'd like to have one consistent update that we can communicate. I tend to typically put a week on Monday, the fifth of October. Which would be after our work session with city council next week. Do you guys think we need to send some kind of, of communication out? I'm, I'm just assuming we do, but perhaps it's just me who thinks we need to.
I think that's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Are we ready to make a statement though?
I think, I think, so the, the answer is, I don't know yet, Randy. It kind of depends on these next milestones here.
Won't our, won't our presentation to city council be covered in the paper?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, a, a few highlights maybe. We're not, we're not going to be talking dates. So I, I feel that we need to set an expectation of when we're going to communicate the eligibility, the application timeline. I just put in November thirteenth with a, a view that applications can start to be submitted on November thirtieth. With January fifteenth as being the closed date for applications. So what's your, you know, reaction to those dates?
They're coming at us in a hurry, is my reaction.
I mean, November thirtieth is two months away. I mean, I think, I think we're going to be, you know, ready to start taking applications then.
I guess personally, so Anna speaking here, I had a question, I thought that applications would be on like a rolling basis, not necessarily like due at one point in the year. But like if. Okay, so if we close applications in January fifteenth, what are we doing the rest of the year as a committee?
We'll be busy till, until March.
Okay, and then after that?
Not too much until, we'll probably have to do a second iteration of our procedures. And then we'll be pretty much hiatus until we start next year, probably next October. I mean, that, that's the expectation I've got because it's, it's a once a year application. The monies are available in March. Do you have a, a comment there?
Who are you calling on, Neil?
Either you or, or Becca, I'm getting to Anna's question, so I'm, I'm operating that this is a once a year deal.
Yeah, I, I'm very intrigued by Anna's suggestion and I think especially for the first year, it might be a good idea to allocate say fifty percent of the funds in, in the first iteration and then do a second iteration. A lot of nonprofits like to have a couple of opportunities in the course of a year to have access to funds. And it might be a good way to just say, we're going to have, you know, I don't know, you know, fifty thousand dollars in the first six months and that would give time to test out all these processes and procedures as well and evaluate and refine as you go into a second iteration year. So I'm intrigued by the suggestion.
Are we talking competitive grants only? That's what I would do.
I would think that the, the five, that that should be given out all of, all of their share in March so that they have it for the year. Because I remember that could be used for their, just their normal operations. And then the competitive grants, I had assumed it would all be given out at once, but it is an interesting concept to, to split it out that way for, for a, a little bit more of a widespread broadcast of funds to, to the different entities. Other than that, I had assumed that most of the activity would be, you know, from this November to March and then the group would, the board would not have much activity other than that. The other reason I really think it's worth, I like Anna's discussion is that November and December for nonprofit organizations is their major fundraising time of the year. And, and tying up the year end budget and everything, it's just really a tough time to produce a grant at the same time as you're, as you're doing probably your major fundraising activities. So just another thought, I think we'll learn a lot by this first go around and to do another one later in the year, I can imagine being really helpful. It doesn't mean we have to have necessarily rolling all year, but we could have two periods, you know, one as described and then another one in June or July. Something like that.
So, so how, how about round, round one is for projects to be completed by the end of June? And round two would be projects to be completed in the second half of twenty twenty-one?
I think you'll, you'll let it be completed all year, either, either round.
You know, I guess I was, I was kind of thinking like, like Anna, it would be a, a rolling application for as long as there's any money to be had, but you know, if it's all gone in March, then it stops unless, that, that's why I was kind of reluctant to be, be taking reports and analyzing them for receipts and, you know, doing all that justification, because I was thinking we were going to have applications to review throughout the year, so.
Yeah, no, I think personally, having monthly applications, I don't like that at all. I personally, I, I could go, go for two rounds. If, if only to kind of test out the processes that we are developing. I guess I should ask the board, are you all good with this being a, a twelve month out of the year gig? Because I, I came into this thinking it was more like six months of the year.
The application said we had to meet monthly.
Well, if there's an agenda, yeah.
I, I wonder, this is Sarah. Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I feel like the review process is a, a, a pretty decent undertaking for us to do and I also feel like this establishment process is incredibly time intensive at this time. I'm personally reluctant to have multiple grant deadlines throughout the year. Just knowing what it's going to take to go through that process and I wonder if we're interested in meeting out the amount of work throughout the year that we make the tier one application do at one point and make the tier two application do six months later. And we'll still know all year how much money we have to give out for the one that's coming later. But then it's not the huge chunk of work all at one time.
Yeah, the, the competitive grant is going to be a total of about forty thousand dollars, okay? That's how much we're talking about. You know, and, and I think dividing that into, into rounds, I mean, we're going to be struggling, I think, with the initial round of grant applications and only having twenty thousand dollars.
So I guess I have a question, Neil, Anna here. Say we only get applications for twenty thousand dollars, what happens to the other twenty thousand dollars? Does it just sit until the next year?
I think we'd have to do a round two. I, I think it's very unlikely that scenario happens.
Yeah, I really don't know what to expect. And then what precedent are we setting for future years of this committee as well? So does interest fall off after the first year? What happens then? Is there new rules applied? Like, I'm just curious more than anything.
Yeah, I think it's, as this is only half a year's worth of funds because it began on July one, I think we could argue we're allocating half a year's worth of funds in round one, that gives us an argument in twenty twenty-one to have two rounds. You see what I mean? Because the MAC tax did not begin till July one.
Is there flexibility in how we're creating this application process? Like, if we only allocate twenty thousand dollars worth of forty thousand dollars, are we able to decide that we can just open up a second round?
Is that a question for the city? Like, is that funding allowed to just sit in a bucket somewhere until we get enough qualified applications that we're comfortable distributing it?
In our SOPs, I think we've got wording in there that we can allocate up to the amount of the budget. We already have that in the SOPs, but we don't have anything about a second round could be, could be held if, if there are funds left over and, and maybe that's, that's the answer here is that could be a round two if, if there are funds left.
And the, the money does sit in a, a special fund, it does not go away. So if it's not spent, it just rolls over into the next year or you do a second round or you do multiple rounds?
I'm going to add, add wording to the SOP where we talk about the budget that a second round will be offered in, in June if there are funds left over. Okay?
Cool.
Neil, may I, may I jump in? Yeah. So Becca, just for clarity's sake, so you said there, it will remain in a separate fund, is that in a literal, is there a truly going to be a distinct fund or will it be a dedicated fund balance in the general fund?
No, it's got a dedicated revenue stream, which means we could set it up as its own fund. And then we, I've split it out to two separate fund balances within this match fund so that it doesn't get, you know, if it rolls over into the next year, we'll know what part of it goes to the five and what part of it is for the competitive grants, so it, it remains split out.
It truly will be, then two distinct, two distinct additional funds that you're creating.
Well, it's one fund with two separate fund balances, kind of like El Paso Becker's.
Gotcha, okay. I just, the whole, sorry. I just, to me, the whole, the whole calendar is just kind of a little awkward relative to the city's general budgeting calendar because going back to Nancy's point about nonprofits, nonprofits usually.
Independent of the budget, Jason, this isn't a budget, this is based on the prior year actuals.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about the, the, the city's general budget calendar being the actual, you know, calendar year. And the fact that this process takes place in March. It, so the money is all going to, I think I mentioned this the last meeting, it's, it's kind of, it's appropriated somewhat generically. And I, I guess typically, to go back to Nancy's point, that, that nonprofit fundraising typically is really hones in on, you know, this time of year that we're in right now, it's because municipal budgeting typically, you know, they finalize in December for the coming calendar year. So in, in this case, the, the calendar is laid out here, everything is going to be appropriated in a very generalized lump sum fashion. Maybe that's okay because it de-politicizes the allocation of these funds because there isn't that political process that takes place with the budget adoption each year. But typically nonprofits are rallying and, and lobbying the city council right around this time of year for whatever their upcoming yearly priorities are because they're doing so, you know, relative to what the city budget process is, which is adoption in December. With, with this, the city council is going to appropriate these funds in sort of a very generic blind sense outside of the political process. And it'll be up to this board to allocate. I'm kind of curious how that, that jives a tabor with funds being appropriated for no specific purpose, that's just kind of a legal curiosity thing. But just relative to the political process, are we, is everyone okay with that and kind of understanding that this calendar very much removes sort of the nonprofit lobbying cycle from the normal political cycle, which is, you know, they, they would always generate their wish list in October or I'm sorry, in August, September and, and move it forward through the budgeting process, what's really got going in earnest, you know, in October and, you know, people would rally and they'd show up to meetings in November and say, you know, this, this effort needs to be funded, RIMFE, Rocky Mountain Field Institute, whatever. These nonprofits would kind of gather their troops and, and further their interest through the kind of political budget adoption process at the end of the year each year. This completely takes the process outside of that and I'm, I'm not saying that's bad or good, it's just, it's different relative to what's been happening. Does that all make sense? I just wanted to.
That's why there's MAC, that's why there's a specific sales tax, that's why there's this board. I mean, I mean, I'm not sure to say other than that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Is that true though? This is a question for Nancy, I guess, but does, is the council now off the hook for funding any other nonprofits as they've done in the past?
We do not currently have them scheduled, we've taken them all off with the exception of RIMFE, which is, doesn't fall under this, Healthy Choices, Partners for Healthy Choice, which is a relationship we have with the school, so that doesn't really fall under this.
Partners for Healthy Choice, which is the relationship we have with the school, so that doesn't really fall under this. Uh, and the one that does, that might is the Manatee Springs Art Council. Everything else are just the city's boards and and of course, the environmental group. But all the rest are just the city's appointed boards and committees.
There's one more, the Golden Circle Nutrition Program, that doesn't fall under match either, so there is, there is, there'll, there'll be a request to city council to. To do the. The normal annual.
Thanks, and that's not showing up for a lobbying, you know, it's not showing up on our ten November schedule, so. That's, yeah, but that wouldn't fall under match either.
I'd like to approach it from a different point of view, which is what Nancy said earlier. That the cycle of November, December for nonprofits has a lot to do with fundraising. And to have the fifteenth of January, that is a very rushed deadline, so one of the things that we could do to make this easier. Is to have the deadline be at the end of January, to give them a whole month to put together their proposal.
I agree with that, this is Sarah.
Okay. So I've taken out, I'm just saying applications, I'm not saying anything about round one or round two. Our our SOP will give us the flexibility, should the funding not be exhausted. With this January round, okay? I can tell you, I think it depends very much on who the nonprofit is. If you're involved in IndiGiv, I get it. If you're not, you know, it's maybe different, but I I pushed it to January thirty first. So there's a two-month window there. For people to do their applications, my experience is people will not. Will will often wait to the to the deadline, so, you know.
Absolutely.
So. Then um, probably have to change this a bit, so a question here. You know. I wasn't thinking we would ask people to come in and present. We'd ask people to come in to answer our questions if we have them.
And I think that could even be a phone call, not necessarily a meeting.
Right. Yep.
Well, I I mean, we would have a a meeting and we would invite whoever. Is is needed to come in to answer, uh, uh, answer questions. Or.
I think Sarah's right, a lot of times it's just a phone call. It's a simple question.
Okay, I I got you, so an individual from the board would just call them up, I got you, I understand. Yes. Which is actually. Yeah, Michael?
I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
We have people coming in and doing, doing presentations. That's, that's a bit extreme, and I don't think any of us want to be dealing with something like that. And Sarah is right, basically, most people are gonna have a a one or two questions that could be answered over the phone.
Okay.
Okay. Neil, another point here, we're looking at. Final date of January thirty first for grant applications. That's, that's pretty tight. I know organizations might be ready to go. On that timeframe, but I do have some concerns about individual artists or individual groups. They don't even know, most of them don't even know about this yet.
Well, that's, that's why they get a communication out. You know, of course they don't, we haven't told them anything. I mean, that's the whole point of getting a timeline, and we can communicate.
Neil, do we have a timeline when we're gonna up update the website? Because that's where most of the people are going to go to find out information, the Pike's Peak Bulletin might reach a few people. In comparison to what the website's going to do, the website is crucial.
Yeah, so that would obviously go on. The website also, when we have whatever it is available that we want to, you know, communicate.
Okay.
At this point, there isn't anything on the website, because we don't have anything that's been approved.
Could we tell them that we're working? Could we also pull off the old ordinance that is on the web, the current website?
Yeah, I I think that was put there just so there was something. But the first thing I would like to have on there is this status.
I had to send an email to our PIO officer. Alex, and he is right now all tied up with the budget book, but he says he does have it on his. On his plate that he will go in and and update it to say that. There were, the ballot question approved, approved the match board. And also put a link to the agendas, because right now it just says it's got the July twenty third agenda still on there. So he is aware it needs to be updated.
Okay, Becca, I was not aware that you you have one person dealing with so many different things pertaining to the city website, that's a lot. I did not know it was quite that much.
So. You know, frankly, I think January thirty first for the application deadline is very reasonable. As long as we get the word out. I completely agree, so I I would want in this status to include some of these dates. Particularly these three here. And then probably April in terms of an expectation for when funds might be distributed. We know on February tenth, we'll know what the final number is that's available. Because that's when we get December actuals, okay? This next section is really not for. The public yet, but you know, I I'm. Assuming a Nancy fortune, you can advise here. Should, should we plan an iteration of review with council? Or should we just say, this is it, we're done?
Um, that's a great question.
I, my. Recommendation today is that just anything you can do to have everything as final as possible, so that council doesn't have to engage in. Making decisions on this other than a final decision, like yay or nay. Thumbs up or thumbs down, because you hear all the discussion you guys are having, you don't want another seven people rehashing everything.
Yeah. So this is important, because that kind of gives us the month of February. To really review all the applications and rate them. Actually, we're still, when they begin coming in, but.
I think we need a month, not two weeks.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, so I I can actually. Change this now, okay? Because I believe we can start reviewing applications when they start coming in, we don't have to wait to the first of February. I might not rate them until I've got them all, but I can actually review them for content.
I bet we get all in the last forty eight hours.
Repeat, repeat that, Sarah?
I said, I I bet we get them all in the last forty eight hours.
I was thinking thirty sixth.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think, I think you're gonna be surprised.
You know, um.
So, yep.
Grant review committees that I've been on before. They don't do that because they feel like it's not fair. The reviewers get all the packets at once, they're all gathered, you get them all at once. And and you're given whatever, two weeks to read all of them. And then two weeks, or a week, actually, in one morning, you get to, one, you have the matrix, you score everything. And then you get together in one final meeting and look at all your scores. If things dribble in and we're reviewing them as we dribble in, and I think I saw this on the agenda, but. People can't help but start to talk and form opinions one at a time. Whereas if you get them all at once, you're gonna do a much more fair job of comparing grant to grant. At one time, and that's just, I assume that it's been that, done that way for a reason. With major thunder.
It would, it would make sense in maybe the third week of February to block off half a day. Which would be, once we've had a chance to review, our kind of of scoring and everything. Or we just have a very long evening, evening meeting, I mean, that's, that's the other option. But you know, I think, I think it is gonna be a good four-hour chunk of time. Just for the competitive grants.
Can I, can I ask a question here? Is it the understanding and intent that we will sort of deliberate? As the, as a body for, you know, amongst each other for partial funding, assuming that the requests outweigh the available funds? Is that, is that kind of how things will operate, that the board will sort of look, look what's on the table and say, well, is it worthy project? And I, I, that reminds me of something that should probably be asked, is the viability of a project. If it does not receive full funding, I think that's an important thing to ask on the application, but assuming. More partial funding, will we all talk about, okay, this, we can do this to, you know, to the tune of six, sixty, seventy percent, but not full, and that's a discussion that this board will have?
Yeah, so so the ultimate. Deliverable, and I think I sent out a Steamboat Springs template. We, it 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 is literally a table with every application, how much they ask for. And how much they will receive, and that will be. Our deliverable to city council is a matrix. And we'll probably have to have some commentary. So we could answer questions, why this one's getting a hundred percent and this one's getting seventy percent. But but that's, that's the ultimate deliverable. And I can envision we would do ratings in in one meeting. And depending how exhausted we are, that then takes us into the allocation of funds.
I, at the county level, we were doing that all in one meeting, really generally didn't even run, and that was over, you know, over a million dollars.
If if people are up for it, I think it's better to do it in one go, I agree.
Now, if everybody's filled out the matrix for every grant, done their scoring for every grant, it it can go pretty quickly. Other than deciding how much you would give them.
Yeah. You're right, and and Nancy, I mean, I I will build a workbook, so this is somewhat automated. Otherwise, we'll go mad, but the items in here, you know, yellow. Are the ones I would like to be able to, as a board, communicate in early October.
Neil, I have just one question about tier one. And this is a question for council, I think, but but one of the requirements is tier one is that the, that the organization has been in existence for two. Years, and we have these questions around the library and Hiawatha Gardens. But I'm wondering if the organization, if the city decides that the organization that can apply for the library is the. I don't know what their name is, but basically the 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 library group, they won't have been in existence for two years.
The city. The city will be, we have a staff officer from the city who is in charge of. Getting all input on the library and making recommendations to council, so that will come from the city, not from the group unless they have something else they want to submit. But for the actual building, it'll come from the city.
Yes, so I think that would be okay. But I mean. Do, do the. It seems to me, if I'm a potential applicant, I want to know. When we're gonna have the information available about what's gonna go into the application. I'd want to know when, when the applications are due, when can they be submitted? And I would want to know an expectation for when the monies would be available. That's the way I was thinking of communicating. In the first communication. Is anyone who disagrees with that, because I I bring this up next week, because I actually went wondering if. If we should send it or if city council should. If the city should. But you know, those were the key dates. I'm not gonna make it April one, because that's April Fool's Day. But you know, a sensible date in April, tax day, April fifteenth, there you go. But I mean. The, these are are the dates that I was gonna bring up next week. With council that, you know, in terms of of getting something out to potential applicants, okay? If I don't hear anything, I'm gonna move on. All right. So I think February will be when we review applications. And we do our rating, and of course. Prepare the deliverable, which is what the recommendations are. Then, okay to move to item four, communications beyond the MAC board?
Yes.
Okay, so Sarah and I had a situation two weeks ago, last week. Where someone was asking if we would come to the board to tell them what was going on. And you know, I said, well, why don't you just come to the city council work session? And then it occurred to me after that, that we probably do not want to be in the business of getting, giving individuals updates. I think we want to invite people to the next meeting we have with city council. Or they can come to this meeting and and. Make comments in the public, you know, comment section, but I think we need to be very careful about offering. Guidance or status or our interpretation of status to. Potential applicants, and I just wanted to hear what others thought of that.
I agree a hundred percent. If they want to, there's minutes out there, they can, yeah, they can attend Zoom meetings, it's, it's, it's on there.
And, and that's, that's kind of why I'd like to get an update out, so that something. And to Michael's point, get some content on our website a- as it gets approved. Okay.
Neil?
Yes.
Okay. On, what was that item? I can't see item four on here, hang on.
On the agenda, it's, it's about communications beyond the MAC board.
Stand by, I'm trying to get around the page that you have up. Okay, discussion of communications beyond the MAC, yes, I totally, totally support that. We can't be having conversations with people outside. In fact, when we just went through the deadlines, the timeframe for applications and all of that. That's our information. That information should not be going out to anybody until it's absolutely actually published for the public. I mean, I can't go down to a group of artists in the park and tell them, oh, here are the deadlines you need to pay attention to. Okay? None of that. Everything that's going on here right now does not leave our circle, it can't.
That's, that can't be, Michael. Unfortunately, this is a public meeting and all the sunshine laws apply. So everything you guys discuss is on public record. Sorry. You just make sure it's draft all over stuff, that's all.
But I think, I think Michael's comment is, I'm not going to go and knock on, on individual people's doors and say, hey, you know, here's some information. You know, we'll, we'll send an official communication somehow in early October. And that will be like our plan of record. And that's what we will refer people to in our one-on-one engagement with organizations. Obviously, anyone can listen to this recording if they want to on YouTube. And of course, our minutes will, will be made public also. So I'm going to move on to item five, which was the materials. I copied your, that went to Becca last week for next Tuesday, city council. We're looking to get approval of the eligibility, looking to get approval of the conflict of interest. Now, they can't approve on Tuesday, it's a work session, I think. But they can at least nod their heads and approve at the next meeting. I listed a number of questions out. And I've also enclosed our minutes and work session notes for reference, because I really want to draw attention to the call we had with Steamboat Springs about taking the politics out. And I'm, I'm going to be asking city council to please, you know, resist individuals lobbying them for some kind of favor in the allocation process. That, that, that was one of the biggest takeaways from the Steamboat call. So that's on next Tuesday, and I'm going to be asking eligibility was Michael and Sarah. You can table any questions that come on that. And the conflict of interest was Randy and who helped you with the conflict of interest, Randy?
Laurie Wood.
Laurie, okay. So it'd be you, no, Nancy, Nancy, sorry, sorry. It'd be you and Nancy can table any questions on that. In other words, I'm not going to do, I will try very hard, but I will not be doing all the talking. Okay?
Okay. So Neil, this is Sarah. I'm sorry. So we're all supposed to be attending the city council work session on Tuesday?
I don't think everyone has to. It'd be, be nice to at least have you or Michael. And it'd be nice to have Nancy or Randy. But you know, I, I think it's, it's always good to have a reasonable turnout, but I also understand, you know, time. And if we're the last item on the agenda, it might be 10 o'clock, you know, but.
Neil, did you confirm, I, I have you as either the first or the second on the agenda for 30 minutes.
Awesome, awesome. There you go, beautiful.
That'll be confirmed tomorrow, but we were trying to put you early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What time does that meeting start then?
6 o'clock.
And there's, there's usually what, 15 minutes of stuff, Nancy, at the beginning?
Yeah, it's shorter at a work session, so it should, it should be pretty close, you know, five past six.
So that's kind, and, and I'll be asking for another work session in October. It's going to be tough with budget stuff. Because we will want to get the application approved. And we may even have, have the rating matrix. Because, but that'd be something I ask for a commitment, that we, we can come back in October sometime.
We have you on to the 6th of October as well. As just one of the advisory boards, so it's more budgets oriented, but currently you're on there.
Yeah, I think we'll be done with the application and FAQs. The rating piece, we'll just see where we are. Okay. That's it for, for council. Was there anything I left off?
The only things would be the reports from the city council liaisons, staff liaisons and board members.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I meant under item five. So all business none, topics for future board meeting or work session. So our next meeting is on the 8th of October. I'll be absent. Shanti, you'll be on, on base to represent me, okay?
Wait, Neil, I thought, I thought Sarah was doing that.
Yes, she is, but I'm saying Shanti will be the, the alternate that has voting privileges. Sarah will chair it.
Okay.
I think the agenda is going to be application, rating. I may even suggest that we put this memo on the eighth agenda, the one that we distribute. Because I don't want to write that on my own. I might provide a draft that you guys can then edit, so we could send it out through whatever we are directed, post it on a website with those milestones and a general status. Okay?
Yeah.
So those are the items I'd have for the eighth agenda. Is there anything else we want to have on, on the eighth? Oh. What is arts, culture and history? We should probably have that, don't you think?
Yeah. So we'll, I'll review the, the PDFs and then be prepared to discuss them at that meeting.
Yeah.
And then also, also the same thing with the common grant application?
Yes. Well done, Sarah. I'm writing this all down because I have to remember to put it on the agenda.
By the group to start meeting in person again? Or are we all satisfied with Zoom?
When will Lori be back?
Well, I just got an email from her. She was feeling under the weather. When she got home, she laid down for a nap and just woke up.
I can also tell you that council is meeting for the first time, hopefully in person on the 3rd, next Saturday for our budget brief with a number of precautions in place. So we'll see how that works, and that may inform you guys if you want to start meeting in person.
I just want to say that if we meet in person and, and are masked and are six foot distance, I really can't hear or understand people. This is so much better for me.
I agree with you.
I agree with you, Nancy. I like Zoom.
Okay, so sounds like certainly for the eighth, we'll stick with Zoom. And I think we should also say that for the 22nd. So both are meetings in October, Zoom. There's going to come a point here, we, we will want to, I think. Thanks, Randy. Nancy, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. One is, I, I, you've heard me say this before, but I just want to keep emphasizing that, and it is your questions to council, I would recommend, whenever you can, don't go in with a question, go in with a recommendation, asking them to say yes or no. If you go in and ask for more than that, I, I, I get nervous about what that might turn into. So I'll keep reminding you of that. I just mentioned
So Nancy, I sent this, the questions, when I cover those, I'm going to sort of phrase them as answers.
Good, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Even then, it could go anywhere, but I just, yeah, so you know what I'm talking about, Neil. Then, as I mentioned, 10 November, I might've said October, but 10 November is when all the boards are coming in. So that's versus October, Neil.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, got the wrong date on that. But Plan Manitou update is also this Tuesday. And that may be of interest to you guys, as is Hiawatha Gardens update is this coming Tuesday. So that may be of interest to you guys. May not be, I don't know. And then Christine Lohenberg is a staff person who is now heading up the Carnegie Building effort, and that is tentatively on the agenda for 13 October. So that may be of interest to you. And then you already talked about Alex working the commo plan, the communication plan at some point. And he can be a tremendous asset, and Becca can be the liaison for when, when he's available again, because I know he's swamped right now. So, and that's all I had, thanks.
Thanks, Nancy. Backside, do you have anything? Okay. See, board members, anything else?
Can I, can I ask a question, Jason?
Yeah.
Just the Carnegie, Nancy is referred to as the Carnegie Building. More and more, I've seen it referred to as such. I, I noted in our agenda tonight, it was referred to as the Carnegie Library. Will we continue to refer to it as the Carnegie Library, or do what seems to be happening elsewhere and refer to it as the Carnegie Building?
And Jason, I refer to it as the Carnegie Building, because that reflects the language in the initiative.
Okay, so what does that say for?
I refer to it as, as the library, you know? Because that's what it is, it's the library, but yeah. It might change.
I mean, that's what Carnegie was known for, he was building libraries.
I've noticed a migration away from that reference. I want to make sure we're not going to migrate along with others in doing so. Is that fair to say?
You probably should go with the flow and just call it the Carnegie Building, because at this point, I'm not sure what's going to be happening with it.
Okay. Let's not go down any more Carnegie Building ratholes. Are we good? All right, guys. Thank you for a lively discussion. I will see you in, in four weeks. And some of you, I guess, I'll see on Tuesday.
Meeting officially adjourned at 8:31?
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Thanks, everyone that didn't already hear it, bye.